Evening and welcome to the May 1st Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Engelbert.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Trustee Gachon.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Froman.
Present.
Mayor Edmond.
Present, and today we do actually have an appointment to the, let me pull up her bio, to the Tuckahoe Historic Preservation Commission. So I would like to just read Peggy Bellis's bio. Peggy is a lifelong resident of Tuckahoe, where she and her husband Danny have raised their five children. Their four grandchildren are currently sixth-generation residents, and two of their sons are Tuckahoe police officers. Peggy's great-grandmother, Selma Hunt, moved to Tuckahoe from Norway in 1915, and she and her husband Harry raise their family on Garfield Street. Peggy's grandmother, Dorothy Rich, aunt and mother Vivian all graduated from the Main Street School and the Tuckahoe High School. Her grandfather, Joseph Rich, owned the gas station on Main Street at Washington Street, which later became Hutton's Autobody and is currently the building across the street from E-CAP. Peggy served as a police lieutenant with the Tuckahoe Police Department. She taught law classes at the Tuckahoe High School level and oversaw the youth services, including DARE and the Explorer Program, before retiring in 2015. She's a graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, the University of Virginia School of Professional Studies, Westchester Community College, and she's graduated from Catherine Gibbs School of Paralegal. Peggy has served as vice chair of the E-CAP Advisory Board. She was on the Tuckahoe PTA as chairperson for the Safety and Wellness Committee and has been a volunteer for numerous local agencies, including the library, Tuckahoe High School, and Eastchester Senior Center. She's currently serving on the Community Fund and has been appointed as the new Youth Community Fund Coordinator. She owns a consulting business and works for New York State Department of Criminal Justice as an assessor and a compliance auditor, as well as a mentor to the New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, the same program that accredited us in the Police Department. She has a deep, rich history in the village and said to me that she values serving others in her hometown. She's really honored to be considered. Sorry she couldn't be here today and is grateful to the hard work of the Historic Preservation Commission and the board and promises the community to serve as she has done most of her life here. So I'd like to ask the board for a motion to appoint Peggy Bellis to the Tuckahoe Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Sorry Peggy couldn't be here, but congratulations Peggy, and I know that she'll be a great addition to your team. Jenny? And Jenny, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, you can, since you're going to be coming up to do a presentation anyhow. Let's get this party started, because you know, the Rangers are playing tonight and I already got like texts and calls.
Let's do it. Arandino, members of the board. First, thank you for the appointment of Peggy to the Tuckahoe Historic Preservation Commission. She brings an incredible amount of experience and skill and obvious heart to what we are already doing. So we're grateful to have her and we look forward to working together. I am here tonight to say a few words with a presentation, if we could pull that up, about the Certified Local Government Program administered by New York State. I, Jenny Steinhegen, currently serve as the chair of Tuckahoe's Historic Preservation Commission, and the Certified Local Government Program is a historic preservation program. And there are a number of things that I would like to point out, its value, the requirements, if we choose to apply for it, and of course, the benefits to Tuckahoe if we were to go forward and become a certified local government. But on that first slide, we can see that historic preservation, although relatively new in Tuckahoe, is certainly not new in the United States. I'm jumping in, right? Okay, good.
Don't worry, they'll catch up.
We started here in 2021 with our task force and 2022 passed our legislation, but the history of historic preservation in this country, it goes really far back. I could tell stories that date to post-revolutionary war, but in the interest of time, let's move forward to 1966. Because on 1966, it was an important year for historic preservation. We had the passage of the National Historic Preservation Act. And that was important. I don't know how many people remember, but at least a number of people probably remember reading about the old Penn Station, the McKimme and White Building down in Manhattan that was torn down the year before, 1965, despite incredible public opposition. And although the building was lost, what it did was galvanize the entire country. And in 1966, the passage of this act was by congressional approval, which is significant because not only was historic preservation recognized at the national level, but because it was approved by Congress, you now had access to federal funding, and that remains in place. So we have the national appreciation of historic preservation through this act that then gets administered by the states. So you have the creation of what the kids are calling shippos, their state historic preservation offices. And in New York, we have New York Shippo. And so New York Shippo gets their direction from the federal government, and that then trickles down to local municipalities through the Certified Local Government Program. I did have a bullet in between '66 and the amendment that creates the Certified Local Government Program that I thought was a fun fact. There was actually a challenge that went all the way to the Supreme Court on historic preservation. Again, we're back in Manhattan and we're not at Penn Station, we're at Grand Central. The iconic building everyone thinks of when they think of New York City was on the chopping block, not because they wanted to get rid of it, but they wanted to turn it into a skyscraper. And because it was landmarked, they were not allowed to do that. But the owner of Grand Central took them to court, took the law to court, and it made its way all the way up to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court needed to determine if it was constitutional, that a municipality, that a government could declare something off limits even to property owners. And they in fact did confirm that the historic preservation legislation is absolutely constitutional, and they upheld historic preservation legislation. So that brings us to our amendment. Do you see it there? What year is the amendment?
I apologize.
No, no worries. So there's an amendment to this 1966 act. Essentially, what it does is it takes that national status administered by the states and authorizes certified local governments. So municipalities such as Tuckahoe, for example, know best what historic preservation for Tuckahoe could and should look like. So they're saying, okay, well, this money that's coming from the federal government to the state now needs to get to the local municipalities where it will be put to use. That's the certified local government. That's what we have the opportunity to apply for.
So can you just talk about what the requirement is to become a local certified?
That was the next slide. So you have to have historic preservation legislation that meets the requirements of the model law, which Tuckahoe absolutely does because we modeled our legislation after the model law. You have to have a commission with five appointed members, which we do as of 2023. Those members need to meet the requirements spelled out in the legislation. The legislation needs to uphold the standards of the Secretary of Interior regarding archaeology and architecture, which ours does. We included that in the legislation. We need to have an open and fair process, administer trainings, and when applicable, look at support of national and state registers. Tuckahoe meets all of those. So I had a number of slides showing exactly how we meet them, but there is absolute documentation that we meet them.
Sorry.
Four more slides and then we get to... So what would Tuckahoe need to do? We would need to submit a letter of intent to the state historic preservation office telling them that we are interested and that we agree to the terms. That includes an annual audit, where we prove that we're doing what we say we're doing. Now we'll jump to the benefits slide, which is that we get hands-on help from the state historic preservation offices. They can come to our meetings. They can send experts. They can give us trainings. They can also recognize Tuckahoe with a number of other municipalities, not just in Westchester, but in New York State, as being above and beyond the bare minimum of historic preservation. We excel and they show us exactly how to keep that high level, that state level, that federal level. And also grants. And this, I think, is one of the most important pieces of the certified local government. My numbers are from years ago, but we're talking $3,000 to $60,000 potentially. So the money's definitely there and it's being distributed to the certified local governments. It's a matter of going in, if we choose to, getting accepted and asking for the money. If we can match up to 40%, your chances of getting some of the higher sums rise. But nevertheless, there are no requirements that you meet the matching, but they're asking you to, tell you what you want it for. Do you want it for training? Do you want it for experts to come to your meeting? We could do brochures that we put on our website about benefits to owners. The other thing they want you to do is consider national register applications for Tuckahoe, which as we all know, Tuckahoe has two local landmarks. And one of them, the Ward House, actually went before the National Historic Register Representative at the New York State Historic Preservation Office. A determination of eligibility was found in favor that Tuckahoe is sitting on a potential national landmark. The process stopped there. They said you would qualify. Go for it, apply. But you need now owner consent to do that, which is where that stands. And I already talked to the owner of the Washington Hotel, who was in favor of landmarking, and said, let's sit down. If you want to do this, we're here to help you. So that is on our part and a potential other benefit for Tuckahoe.
Okay, sorry we couldn't pull up your presentation, but I have a feeling that you covered it pretty well.
Thank you. I think that was the last line.
And that is pretty impressive.
Well done. Yeah, good job.
I'm very sorry. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes. Jenny?
Yes.
I know this is going to sound like an idiotic question on my part, so forgive me on that. The blue and yellow markers across New York State, do they fit into all of this? Because, boy, I'd love to see one of those blue and yellow big markers in Tuckahoe.
So some of those newer ones are actually pomeroy markers, and pomeroy's are for buildings. I'm pretty sure are 100 years or older, and we could absolutely apply for pomeroy's. Many, many years ago, those were administered by the state. That program ran out of money, I believe, and so the Pomeroy Foundation picked it up. There are a number, I just did some research on the pomeroy's for the County Historical Society, and there are a number in Tuckahoe. In fact, Friday was National Historic Marker Day. And so they asked people to go out and clean those up. But we could, if we could find a place where we could put them, those could be applied for. And they give you money for the plaques.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. So I do need to ask for a motion to open the public hearing to consider the proposed local law to allow for fiscal year '24 budget in excess of the New York State tax cap.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to weigh in, you may do so at this time. Is there anyone on Zoom first? Anyone in person that would like to weigh in? Okay. Then I will ask for a motion, unless there's anyone on the board that would like to weigh in on that. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 11th, 2023 meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that takes us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items only at this time. If there's anyone in the room that would like to address the board on any agenda items, please do so now. Anyone on Zoom that would like to weigh in? Okay, so that will take us to our resolutions. How am I doing, chief? The Rangers are coming on soon. Resolution number one, may I have a motion authorizing the proposed local law for fiscal year '24 budget in excess of the New York State tax cap? I need a motion for this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the second resolution refers to the budget adoption with some modifications. So may I have a motion to authorize the budget adoption, including the modifications that are on our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'd like to give the board an opportunity if anybody would like to say a few words about the budget process, about the budget itself. You may do so now. I know. Trustee Engelbert?
So budgeting for local government, even though I took more than my fair share of graduate classes and have sat on more than my fair share of nonprofit boards during my professional career, it didn't necessarily prepare me for how difficult this process is. And I want to kind of assure the residents of Tuckahoe that in every meeting, in every evening, in every weekend hour kind of spent thinking kind of about this process, that the individual taxpayer in Tuckahoe was first and foremost kind of in my mind, really understanding what is the impact of the decisions that this board makes on his or her kind of life and his or her family and the life that they're trying to lead kind of here in Tuckahoe. And some of that is absolutely the kind of immediate impact on their tax bill. But also, what is the longer-term impact on the quality of life kind of in Tuckahoe? Because my experience kind of in the corporate sector and in the nonprofit sector has been there are short-term decisions that have outcomes and there are long-term kind of outcomes from those decisions. And so I can say kind of with confidence that this board thought through very closely and carefully about the long-term implications. And because sometimes you make decisions to kind of reduce costs, but the long-term costs are much higher for the town. You see this in municipalities around Tuckahoe where decisions were made not to invest in the roads, not to invest in the traffic lights, not to invest in the public works. And so the short-term costs were lower, but the long-term costs were significant, significantly higher. Something called deferred maintenance. It's a very bad, a very bad thing. And so I believe that this budget represents our best effort and commitment to making the best long-term financial decisions for the village, bearing in mind that these are real dollars and real families that are being impacted by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Engelbert. Anyone else?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
I can say, just like Trustee Engelbert said, this was a difficult process. For me, this is my third time having to go through the process of getting the budget done for the village. It's the first time that we're going over the tax cap. It was a difficult process to get through. There was a lot of things to consider. But like Trustee Engelbert mentioned, you have to think long-term. You know, you can say, well, you could have done this, you could have done that, but if it's going to harm you in next year and the year after that, and three years from now, that's not something that you want to do. I'm a homeowner myself, so you know, this was definitely difficult, but I believe that we did the very best we could under the circumstances.
Deputy Mayor?
Yep. So again, I want to reiterate that this was a very long and difficult process for all of us. It was, and honestly, sometimes contentious because I think all of us have the best of the village in mind and we really just want the best for the people who live here, but also the people who work here. And you know, I went through every line item myself, thinking, okay, maybe there's a way to cut this or... But it's a very lean budget. We work on very lean margins here. And if we cut services, that would also mean cutting personnel and it would mean cutting the services that the people who live here have come to appreciate. And so it is a very fine line that we have to walk. It's very difficult. This was one of the hardest group of meetings that we've ever had here. And so know that nothing was done lightly and nothing is flippant. We really considered this and we worked very hard along with the village administrator and the village treasurer, who did an outstanding job to find ways to at least bring the numbers down so that the burden would be lessened for the people who pay taxes here in the village. So know that we are presenting you a modified budget. It is modified from what the original, and that was even modified from an even greater tax levy. So know that this is the outcome of a lot of hard work on the behalf of a lot of people. And you know, thank you for understanding that.
Trustee Gachon?
Thank you. I reiterate a lot of the comments, especially the ones that the deputy mayor just mentioned. A quick thank you to David and Ryan for really working behind the scenes over and over again to try to trim the fat where there was within this budget. And I think we did that and they did that. And we'll be on a good course this year. Thanks.
So I also want to reiterate that our staff worked very hard to try to get us to a point where we could come to some agreement on this budget. So thank you to Ryan, our treasurer, who's here with us, and to David. We had many opportunities to meet and discuss and you know, we're a very lean budget. We don't have a lot of fat in our budget. So when your healthcare costs go up, you know, 17%, 18%, and I understand it because it might not profit, it's going up almost 25%. So when you have your healthcare costs, you know, skyrocket to that extent and you're talking about pensions and contracts that we have to honor, it all costs money. And if you remember when we talked about backyard pickup and eliminating it and leaf pickup, how everyone went nuts, to our deputy mayor's point, people have come to appreciate the services that we get here and that costs money. The other thing that I think is important to note is that we have been making sure that we start working on those capital improvement projects and the infrastructure in the village. Somebody said to me the other day that they were talking to a friend in a neighboring community and they said, our roads are so horrible. And she said, and I could probably say, not in Tuckahoe. Our roads look great. And so paving our roads. We spent a lot of money and time and there are still some areas that I have people call me, well, what about us? And it takes money. Our lights, our traffic lights, we've been working to try to update the infrastructure, the poles, the lights, and the way the system functions. And if you noticed the lights that were changed, it has made a difference. But there is one light that is the bane of everyone's existence that we still have to work on and all of this costs money. And I'm happy to say that this village works very hard to get grants. Our Police Department, the library, you know, DPW, working with TESSC, we get a lot of grants and to the tune of $2 million since 2020. So to what everyone has already stated, we do not take this lightly. The tentative budget started at 9% increase and everyone on the board looked like, oh, that's not happening. And Ryan worked really hard with David and department heads to bring it down to a little over 6% and we still needed to look to see how much more we could reduce it. And so we landed on 4% and in part because we agreed to take some money out of the fund balance. There are some risks in doing that. I am a huge advocate of guarding your fund balance with your life because that amounts to money. That's your credit score. So all of us, you know, when I was young, my credit score was shot. The minute I got a bit of a good credit score, I watched that and I want to make sure that my credit score remains intact. Why? Because it impacts future purchases, how much money you're going to be paying in interest based on that number, so it's important. And we started out with, was it $150,000 in 2014 of a fund balance? $150,000 and now we're at $2.5 million. So that's really important that we make sure that we guard our fund balance and we were able to borrow money, I mean, nearly for free in order to take care of our streets. So just wanted to give the residents a little summary there so that you understand the decision to come to the 4% was not one that was taken lightly, but it was one that I think is fiscally responsible. And that's what this board is charged with. Not being popular, not making decisions because people are going to be upset, but what is in the best interest of the village, not just for today, but for next year and the year to come. So that's my spiel. So thank you all for understanding. And if you have questions, it's never too late to email anyone on this board to contact the village administrator. If you want to speak to the treasurer, you know, anyone who's interested and is a taxpayer is very welcome to come and ask those questions. One more thing, Deputy Mayor?
So just to make it clear, that comes out to about $133 for the average tax bill, which is assessed at $6,500, which means probably nothing to a lot of people. But just consider the average house in Tuckahoe, not the biggest, not the smallest, and you know, the average tax bill, it's about $133 for the year. So you know, I think seventy something, seventy dollars, sixty-five dollars for each tax bill. And so when you, you know, I wanted to make it in real numbers so that we understand what it is that we're, we're doing.
Okay. So we'll move on to resolution number three, authorizing an increase of the short-term meter rate to twenty-five cents per ten minutes.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have resolution number four, authorizing the long-term meter rate to nine dollars a day.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And let's pay the bills. So may I have a motion to authorize the approval of vouchers in the amount of four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight sixty-three and eighteen cents?
So moved, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And resolution numbers five, number six now, sorry. Authorize, this is Camille's favorite part, authorizing the receipt of collection of your taxes. Speaking of taxes, sorry, everyone. I will not read the entire resolution, but may I have a motion to authorize a receipt and collection of taxes?
So moved?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that'll take us to departmental reports to the board and chief, do you have anything?
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of quick announcements. On Wednesday, May third, the department will be participating in the thirty-seventh annual law enforcement torch run to bring attention to a Special Olympics that'll be held later in the summer months. Again, we've been doing this, well, I've been doing it for thirty-seven years. I'm happy to run again this, this Wednesday.
You're dating yourself, chief.
On May thirteenth, we are having our police memorial at nine AM out front, weather permitting. We will be honoring all our deceased members, in particular Sergeant Alfred Fernandez, who passed away this past year. All are invited. And then on Monday, May fifteenth, we are having our award ceremony here in the courtroom to honor all the police officers for their good work the past year. And on June third, we will be having our bicycle safety event at the Main Street Park from eleven AM to one PM. And that's a good time. We raffle off free about a dozen bicycles for different age groups and have hot dogs and refreshments and bicycle rodeo. So it's a good time and all of our young people are invited. And that's it. Is that quick enough?
You're the one that wants to watch the Rangers game. Thanks, chief. And DPW superintendent is not here, right? David, do you have, sorry, Swadeesh, library director?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, everyone. I will be also sure today. I just want to please to report that New York Presbyterian Westchester, they are, they sponsor the Tukahoe Public Library with the two thousand grant in some, in support of community programs. And they are supporting us. This is the third year. Previously, we were receiving one thousand and this year we got two thousand. Some of the upcoming events on Japanese Children's Day, which is going to be on May fifth at eleven thirty AM. And we are offering this, holding this event at least for twenty years. And this is a wonderful event. If you are available, please come and join. And this is an afternoon of origami, calligraphy, children's kimono, costumes, sushi, storytelling and more. So the program starts at eleven thirty, eleven thirty-five. They have a Japanese chorus performance, Hana Mizuki, twelve o'clock tea ceremony, twelve thirty sushi making and tasting, one o'clock tea ceremony, story time, two o'clock. And the program ends at two thirty. So it's a wonderful program for the community to learn about the culture. Also, we have a special online virtual near onwards with Marge Balagreno. She's going to help pattern how to write nature on the page Tuesday, May sixteen at two PM. And Victory Garden with Braco Farm. And this program will raise awareness as to where our food comes from, share our growing methods with the public and demonstrate how small farm growing methods can be adopted to a backward backyard garden. And everybody's favorite, it's a crafting beautiful beaded earring workshop, which is going to be Wednesday, May seventeenth at six PM. Then we have May, Thursday, May twenty-fifth at four PM, Plan for Aging. And we have Maja Freeplay Friday, May twelfth, nineteen twenty-six at one PM. We have our regular yoga, TICs, senior strength training and a couple, all these regular programs. And for children's, we have a creative writing for children, The Wonder of the Outside with author Marge Balagreno, Thursday, May eleventh at four PM. And we have for teenagers, Maker Mondays on May eighth and twenty-second at three thirty to five PM. So everybody's welcome and our sewing classes are very popular. So we are going to do four sessions this month. So first session, which is one going on today and one will, next will be May eighth. And everybody's to make their own tote bag at the library. And the other se, uh, second session will be May fifteenth and May twenty-second.
Thank you.
Any question, please call us or check our website.
Thank you, Swadeesh. Camille, do you have anything? Can you just talk about what the penalty is if they pay late? Just want to make sure everyone knows. Oh, you can't hear her. Oh, and she's like, I've never needed a mic. Not starting now. David?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. One, as we do wrap up this year's budget officially voting on it tonight, that's not where it ends and not where it begins. This budget development began in December. When everyone's worried about the holidays and then worrying about family and things like that, department heads are working on their budget to submit to me by the end of that month. So this is kind of been a long process, but this is not where it ends. We are now going to finish up this year's budget and kind of making sure we finish this year strong, finish next year on a strong note. So I kind of think all the department heads, Ryan, everyone that's, you know, involved in this budget. Again, that's not where it begins, not where it ends. It's kind of continuous throughout the year. And a very good piece of financial news, the village this month was upgraded by S and P ratings from a double A, from a double A to a double A plus. So that's the second highest rating a municipality can have. We're not the size of a municipality can really have a triple A, so it's kind of unobtainable. So this is really kind of our highest rating that we can get. This was upgraded after three years of COVID, after what we've gone through and, and you know, certain revenues going down and kind of things like that. So this is something to be very proud of internally, externally for the, the whole village. Looking forward, kind of, it mentions Tukahoe's continued growth, healthy reserves, strong budgetary performance. So I think kind of the, the management team here and everybody kind of, this is, you know, it's really good news for us and congratulations to everyone.
Congratulations. Gary? Alrighty. So just a reminder, I mentioned it, oh, I don't know if I mentioned it last month, maybe I did. But there will not be a May eighth meeting. This is the meeting for May. The next meeting will be held on June fifth at seven PM. So just to repeat that, there is no meeting on May, next month, May, next week, May eighth. The next meeting will be on June fifth at seven PM. And that'll take us to our Board of Trustees reports. Trustee Engelbert?
So Camille, I, I love thinking about this little box that folks are putting actual checks. And it seems very modern, a way, way to do that. But no, I'm, I'm kind of joking and I, I promise folks I have a very short, short report. Thank you, Elaine. It was, it was a short email that she sent me, taking care of me. So the Tukahoe History Committee, kind of ongoing work continues on the committee website. The Westchester Historical Round, Historical Roundtable Revolutionary War Two Hundred and Fiftieth Project. I do very fondly remember wearing my own Revolutionary War outfit in nineteen seventy-six when I was, you know, zero. No, I was not zero years old at that point. The World War Two Memorial in Depot Square and a new set of PowerPoint presentations. Again, the work with Facebook has been amazing. In fact, I'm seeing other groups, I think, trying to copy the amazing work of the Tukahoe History Committee with their social outreach on, on media such as, such as Facebook. Again, the history committee meets on Wednesdays from nine thirty to noon here in Village Hall. Contact avail, information's available on the village website. But if you haven't, have artifacts you'd like to share, tukahowarchive@gmail.com. Now, the Tukahoe Public Library, write this in your calendar right now. The Friends Committee is meeting on Wednesday at the library at six thirty PM. A lot of planning and work now is starting to get into the renovation of the library. And so we absolutely need our friends to pitch in with help and work on that. And I'd like to reiterate what Swadeesh said about the Japanese Children's Day. This is a very special day. We have, also have a large Japanese community kind of here in Tukahoe and in Eastchester. So if you can see your way clear to a tea ceremony, music, food, stories and more. It's eleven thirty to two thirty, kind of a nice way to spend a little bit of your lunch hour on, on Friday, if you're able to do that. Tukahoe Community Center, again, every, every month, I'm going to go push for folks, bring their kids on down to the open gym and move those bodies. Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from one thirty to four PM. And everyone out in Tukahoe, do feel for the families of seniors across Tukahoe and Eastchester. Today was Decision Day for college, college applications. And so students made their decisions about where to go and put those deposits down. So wallets are feeling a little bit lighter. So feel for them, but such an exciting time, choosing a college, taking that next step. So well done, all seniors in Tukahoe and Eastchester. That's it for me. Daryl?
Trustee Taylor?
The Eastchester Community Action Partnership, better known as ECAP. They have a parents workshop for elementary school children. And it'll be on Wednesday, starting on this week, on the third, from six to seven PM. And it's basically helping parents develop positive relationships with their children, encouraging desirable behavior, teaching new skills and behaviors and managing behaviors. You do have to register for this event. I will give the number to ECAP at the end. The ECAP's Youth Summer Camp, it runs from July fifth to August eleventh. Ages are seven to twelve years old. The registration is now open. Ailing Irish community is seeking homebound seniors to deliver lunch to. So this is new. This is a program for seniors who can't get out of the house and they need their lunch delivered. So this is a new program that partnership with ECAP. Summer youth employment. ECAP has had summer youth employment since I was fourteen years old. That's a long time ago.
Dating yourself?
But so I think what they started last year in partnering with local businesses where the children work for the business, but they get paid by ECAP, by Westcop. So they are looking to partner again with the local businesses. I think it's a great opportunity if you can have employees working for you in your local business, you don't have to pay them. It helps the children out. So I think this is a great thing. So any local business who wants to participate again, reach out to ECAP. The Senior Food Pantry will be on May seventeenth. You must be sixty-two years or older to qualify. This is a separate food pantry from the normal, regular food pantry they have now. They have one specifically in the middle of the month just for seniors. And for any and all of these events, you can contact ECAP at nine one four three three seven 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 six eight. This is the Veterans Report for this month. On April twenty-sixth, it was Korea War Veterans Remembrance Day. With the help of Shelley Mayer, Andrea Stewart Cousins and local veterans, they passed a bill, a bill was passed in Albany, making April twenty-sixth officially Korea War Veterans Remembrance Day in the state of New York. The Eastchester Tukahoe Veterans Indoor Memorial Tribute Program will be on Thursday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at the Eastchester High School Auditorium. It starts at seven. The doors will be open at six thirty PM. The Memorial Day Parade will be on Monday, May twenty-ninth at ten thirty AM. Muster at Eastchester Library Parking Lot, eleven AM kickoff, down White Plains Road and ending at the General Pope Plaza for the presentation. And the Village of Tukahoe presents Memorial Day Memor, Remembrance Gallery. That's on Monday, May twenty-second. From, I believe it's from six to eight PM. The open gallery starts from six to six thirty and the live program begins at six thirty. The featured honorees are falling hero, three fallen heroes, I believe it might be four. The first one is Sergeant Robert Murray. The second is A.C. Jeffries, who are Tukahoe Post's named af, after. And the third is Edgar Joyce. There will be live music by the Tukahoe High School Jazz Quartet. Admission is free and they will be serving food and drinks. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you. I just have to say that the, the Met Gala isn't going to have anything on our gala of remembrance for Memorial Day. So please be there. One other thing, if you are looking to help sponsor the Memorial Day Parade, checks can be paid out to VCPC. That's Victor Charlie Papa Charlie, VCPC, incentive VFW post two two eight five at four thirty-three White Plains Road in Eastchester. And I'll take pledges as well until May tenth. I know where you live, but we could use all the, they can use all the donations that you can make. And lastly, this past week, our Westchester County Commissioner of Veteran Services, Ron Tochi, lost his wife Patricia Tochi. And she put up with Ron for over sixty years. And so we're sending lots of love to the Tochi family, so keep them in your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cronin?
Good evening, everybody. From TESC, this Saturday, May sixth, is the River Sweep event at ten AM. Families and, and residents who wish to help out can gather at Parkway Oval. You should dress for mud and cold or heat or anything. So usually it's rain or shine unless it's absolutely pouring, will be out there. And so to sign up, you can go on the TESC website, on the River Keep website, on any of our Facebook or, or Instagram pages. Or you can find out more information at sweep@riverkeeper.org. If you can't make it, they also will take your donation, they will happily take your donation. But this is a great event for the whole family. So any child who would like to do some volunteer hours, this is a wonderful way to get some volunteer hours. Just young children need to be supervised by an adult, but it's, it's a perfect event for the whole family. So you should come on out and, and help clean up the area around the Bronx River. We go up and down the river and I believe two years ago, we, we collected like four hundred and fifty pounds of garbage. So just know that this, it has an incredible impact on our community. Also, from the seniors, we are doing Cinco de Mayo Celebration on May fourth at Rio Bravo. Any, any senior, member of the seniors who would like to join that luncheon, please reach out to Lisa Jones and let her know you plan to attend. I believe it's thirty dollars. You may have gotten in the mail this weekend, a flyer requesting donations from East, uh, from Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corp. This is not a fake solicitation. This is, this is part of our community and I just wanted to talk about it a little bit. The mayor and I had the pleasure of going to evac on Saturday and delivering the check sponsored from the village. And that is just one very small part of the story. So evac is, is not have a tax levy. They are not a taxing body the same way that the fire department is. And so they really survive on volunteers and donations from the community and just a few other, a few other donations. So if you have it in your heart and you have, you know, as little as ten dollars, but you know, more than that, if you were able to, please do send them a donation because they could definitely use that. We will have a presentation to talk a little bit about more what evac does next month by Max Goldberg. And so you can come or tune in and listen to a little bit more about what, what role evac plays in our community. So from the zoning and planning boards. So the planning board, the next meeting is May eighteenth and the zoning board, the next meeting is May tenth. Both of them are considering one of Four Yonkers Avenue, which is a, a proposal for a new fitness center slash gym. That's all for the zoning board. The planning board also has two other, two other properties. One Henry Street, which is, is a proposal for a, a new one-family home. And then three seventy-seven Marble Dale Road, which is an area variance for two separate one-family homes on that property. And then Juneteenth is Saturday, June seventeenth. And then Juneteenth is Saturday, June seventeenth, and the committee is still entertaining vendor requests. So if anybody would like to set up a booth and sell goods or services at the, at the Juneteenth Celebration, please reach out to Adrian Michelle. Last month, I was asked about online donations, and we are still in the process of working on that. So just know that that is coming. We haven't forgotten about it, but it is a slightly longer process than we anticipated it being. I just wanted to say thank you to our village administrator, David Burke, and Ryan Ueda, for all of the hard work they've done over the course of this year so far for the budget. But also, I want to really just highlight the hard work that went into making sure that our bond rating has gotten to be the best that it really can be. So an improved bond rating is, is really important for us, and it really speaks to the work and hard work and determination of the people who work in this village. So I just wanted to say thank you publicly. And I believe that is it for me.
Thank you. So we've been talking about budgets and taxes, and I mentioned that, you know, one of the things that we do really well in this village is we get grants. We've applied for a grant for, to do some work at the Depot Square and the infamous light, that when it gets fixed, we're gonna have like a celebration down Main Street, right? Chief, we're gonna close the roads. But one of the other ways that we try to offset taxes is by having filming in the village. And I had an interesting conversation with one of the residents who really is opposed to filming, doesn't like, you know, the traffic, doesn't like the intrusion. And when I talked to her about how much money it brought in, in permits and, and fees, and even when they come in and they, they repair things for us, or they paint for us. So there are a lot of tangential benefits as well. So I say all that to say that the FBI Most Wanted, who's filmed here before, will be returning to Tocco. They'll be filming at the Oak Avenue Bank and the Crestwood Train Station. Once, I know the village administrators, talking with the chief about assessing, you know, parking and other traffic issues, and we will keep you informed once those plans are finalized. I want to make sure that we are communicating with the residents when these things are happening, because I know in the past, we have fallen a little short on making sure that you're informed as to who's coming in, how long they'll be here, what streets will be impacted. And so we're, we'll, you know, we pledge to do better in informing you. Let's see, last week, DPW placed minnows in the quarry next to Fisher Avenue Park for mosquito control. You know, every, every year, Dr. Howell's not here. She talked about, you know, mosquito abatement efforts. We're waiting for approval from the county to place the mosquito control brigades in the basins to further assist in the abatement effort. So we'll keep you posted on that. And on Armavilla and Lake, you, if you recall, we've had a lot of Con Ed work being done, gas work for, you know, many months. It's coming to an end. And we're gonna be paving the small portion of Armavilla that Con Ed does not disturb, did not disturb on the west side of the Triangle Park. So that area will be, you know, completely resurfaced. For those of you who have reached out to me asking for your particular street to be paved, hang tight. That's, that's what I can say, hang tight. And I just want to wish all mothers, grandmothers, aunts, anyone who stands in the gap of a mother, a happy Mother's Day. We have some mother-daughters here today, and I wish you all a wonderful day. Families do the right things by your moms, because you know if it's not for her, everything falls apart. So, right, David? Yep, David's like, yes, that's true. So that's it. This, that takes us to the second opportunity to address the board on any agenda items, sure?
Anthony Laurie's my name.
Good evening.
First of all, I just want to extend an invitation to the whole board. The volunteer firemen are having their memorial services on May twenty-first at the Immaculate Conception Church at eight A. M. After Mass, there's a memorial service at the monument at John Albany's Place in twenty-two. Another thing, I heard all your reports and all that, and I heard the mayor say at last meeting, the board works very hard. I'm sure they do, and I know how it is to sit in those hot seats. But this board has to do something for this village. Get us a bank. One time, we had three banks here. We don't have any now. It's sad. And you just mentioned that in one oh four Yonkers Avenue, you're gonna have a fitness center? Trying to come here? Don't you think we have enough of them? We have one on Marble Dale Road. We have one on Columbus Avenue. We have one on Midland and Main Street. We got another one going on two ninety-one Columbus Avenue. It's sounding like Tocco's gonna be a fat farm. I mean, it's sad. Daryl, when was the last time you bought a shirt and tie in Tocco? Now that Epstein's is closed, Harris, wait a minute, let me finish. Harris Army Navy Store is gone. You know, one time in this village, we had eight gas stations. You got one now that you only could get gas. We had seven butcher shops, and everybody made money. We had grocery stores. We had a supermarket. May they rest in peace. Mayor White and the lady that was a councilwoman in Eastchester, Dorothy Brennan, said we could go to Eastchester and shop, Bronxville, or go over Snake Hill and Central Avenue. We don't want to do that. We want to keep the money in the village here. But we need a bank here, mayor. We had three one time. Two right here on, on Main Street. We had the old one on Oak Street. We had one in Crestwood. We have nothing now. We got like seven thousand people in this, in this community. We could use a bank. We, everyone has to go out of town to do their banking here, unless you do it online. But we need a bank. We don't have nothing here like we used to have, where everybody could shop and everybody made money. All the store owners, the shopkeepers, whatever they had. We had two jewelry stores here. We had three liquor stores here, a number of stationary stores here now. You gotta do something, bring a bank here. Why Wells Fargo left, I don't know. Why the bank in Crestwood left, I don't know. Why the bank NBW left? Well, they went out of business, but there's still a bank there. This is what we need here. We have enough of fitness centers, believe me. I don't think we need anymore. And I hope they turn it down, believe me. Is it, are these fitness centers that overwhelmed that we need another one? Could I get an answer?
Is that an actual question?
Yeah.
You seem like you're dying to talk, so I will let you, and then I'll, I will let you, deputy mayor.
Nobody, nobody is, is in disagreement with you. I think we all agree that we would love to have a bank here. The problem is, is that banks are businesses, and they go where they perceive money to be. And banks are not opening retail stores right now. They are closing retail stores. Even the banks on Central Avenue are closing, and the banks in Scarsdale are closing. Banks are closing everywhere. And while, you know, we would, I don't think anyone would say no to wanting a bank here. It's, it's very-
You don't say no to having physical fitness people here?
I'll answer that question in a second. Hold on a second. I, we, you know, we can only do so much in terms of, we can't force companies to open, and we can't force them to close, because that's how capital-
Invite them to come and look.
And yes, and we have, and we've had conversations. But we, the other thing that is important to know is that when a prospective business owner wants to open a business, we have two choices. The choice is in saying to them, we can let you open, or we can open this other business. It's we can let you open, or that storefront will remain closed for the rest of, for the foreseeable future. And so we don't want to discourage our storefronts from having businesses in them. If we were to, like, if we were to tell this, whatever, whatever the business is, you know, whatever business that we feel like we have a lot of already, you know, we, we can't tell them, you can't open here. It's kind of how capitalism works, you know? And so if we were to control that, we would be interfering with the free market.
So the other thing-
I disagree with you.
So the other, the other, to your point, I have actually met with landlords here and asked them, what are the prospects of getting a bank in, or a supermarket? I even met with the owner of De Chico's, who did a presentation at General So Pope, and talked to him about the possibility of having like a De Chico's Express here. If they don't see a market for it, they're not coming. That's, that's, that's just on the basic level. The other thing is, we can't say no if our zoning, our laws allow for someone to open their business. We can't say, we have too many nail salons, or we have too many pizza shops, or we have too much Italian food. We don't want any more here. We can't do that. Like, we can go out and try to see if there are businesses that might be interested in coming here, and I personally have made those connections and have spoken to people. But then the other side of it is, if somebody finds a potential business owner who wants to rent out their space, they have a right to rent it to whomever wants to come and rent it, unless they're not in, within their, their right based on our zoning laws. So that's the other thing to keep in mind.
Comment on the banking?
Well, trustee Taylor wanted to say-
So, Anthony, not too long after I became a trustee, I, and I started going to the seniors on Tuesday and Thursday, talking to seniors at Four Union. They all said the same thing. We don't have any more banks. Why don't we have no banks? You gotta get us banks. I talked to the mayor about it. I went to several banks myself, and I said, listen, we have a problem in Tocco. We don't have any banks left. None of them responded. None of them wanted to come here. They all left. Chase left. I bank at Chase. I went up there and spoke to them. They moved out of here. Wells Fargo, they're closing locations. They're not opening locations. The Citizens Bank in Bronxville, which took over for HSBC, because I bank with them, I spoke to them, and they said, we're just now taking over eight hundred something branches. Maybe after a year when we get established, we can look at a location in Tocco. But believe me, we've tried to get banks to come here. And unless they see, like she's, like the mayor said, if they're not gonna make X amount of dollars, and unfortunately, the size of our village, they're not coming here to open a branch. So it's not because we didn't try. We did try.
I'll let trustee Engelbert close out, and then I just want to make one final comment.
So the, the closing of retail bank outlets is a global phenomenon that has been unfolding for the last ten years. You'll see the same concerns at kind of local government meetings, meetings just like this in rural England, in France, in Canada, in Australia-
Yeah, but we're not in those countries.
No, in the United States, everywhere. It's about the move to online and mobile banking. So Citibank, Chase, all of these organizations are closing, contracting-
Don't nobody's got no more money?
Nope, they're, they're moving to online and mobile banking. And so ten years from now, Mr. Laurie, what you will see is that retail banking, retail banks will be few and far between in terms of physical locations.
Okay, well, before they get that, let's work on getting one here. And, and, and stop worrying about physical fitness places. We got plenty of them, plenty of them. And like I says, unless people think Tocco's a fat farm, come here. You got plenty of gymnastics over here. We don't need any more of them. You know, if, if, if we had used car lots all around here, I'm sure people would start complaining. So we got enough of gyms here, and enough of physical fitnesses here. You know, you got a big old gas station that was on Columbus Avenue that's a fitness place now. You, you got an old factory that was on Marble Dale Road. That's one now. Now you got one on the corner of Midland. You got one coming in two ninety-one Columbus Avenue. And now she's telling us that we're gonna have another one coming. I, I just don't see, see that. I'm sorry, I, I may be disagreeable to you people, but I can't see another physical fitness place coming here. And I don't care who's the landlord. Enough is enough of those things. We need something here where we can keep our money in this village. We don't have a grocery store. That's, I think seniors, I'm a senior too, but I think seniors would love to have a grocery store. Just take a little walk down the corner, buy their little essentials, and be happy. They, poor people down on Union Place and Jackson Avenue have to call cabs so they could go to the grocery store. I mean, a lot of those people like to exercise, walk up from Union Avenue down to the depot and buy their, their few good things that they have to go to market somewhere else out of this village. It's sinful. We never had that here. We had everything in this village at one time. You, you could have even bought material in here. If someone wanted to make a dress or a suit, we had everything in this village. We have nothing no more. But we got plenty of room for physical fitnesses.
Mr. Laurie, I, I'm, I'm just grappling with your statements as if this problem just started when this board got here.
No, I didn't say that, mayor. No, 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 I didn't, I didn't blame you on that. I never said that.
But I just want to make it clear-
But I'm just saying, this village had many a things here. I, I mean, there's a lot of native people here. There's a chief back there, he's a native person. Ms. Pagarelli's back there. She could tell you, we had plenty of stuff back in this village. We have to try to get a few of these things back into this village instead of all these physical fitness things. I don't think everybody's into physical fitness. People come from all over. I mean, I love to see people in physical fit, but we got enough of that. We need some businesses here.
So one of the things that I think will move us maybe in the direction of the, the right type of businesses that we may be, that may be sustainable here, I don't know that a bank will be, if you heard all the comments-
Yes, I know, I heard that.
Because of where, where things are moving. So if we have a bank-
But Daryl has to buy new ties.
Daryl, you gotta buy new ties. So when we start working on the master plan committee, and these, some of these issues come up, that may help in the process.
I hope so.
But again, we can't make any promises, because if a business wants to bring in, whatever they want to bring in, another fitness center, the zoning and planning boards, they have to make decisions based on what our laws are.
Well, I hope they see the right way.
Okay. Thank you. Absolutely.
My very short time here, the thing I'll tell you is, the mayor especially, and the village administrator work hard to, to court businesses, and to court filming, and to court the revenue to come in. And it's just one of the observations that I've seen over the last month. So they're actively kind of pursuing this all the time.
I hope, Mr. Laurie, that you think we're doing something right here. I'm gonna be waiting for that mic, mic moment. Anybody else want to come?
Anthony Fiori-
It's working.
Anthony Fiori, three been in place. Pharmacy was the other one, on this side.
Pharmacy, mhm.
A little mini CVS or something like that. Okay, just a few things that didn't come up tonight. May sixteen, it's a school budget day and trustee vote, Eastchester-Tocco. So you'll be probably getting flyers in the mail soon for that. And May tenth, I just saw the sign on twenty-one Scarsdale Road, Yonkers Planning Board for that apartment complex that's going up. So if anybody wants to see it, it's yonkers.gov, Planning Board. It's on there. And did I add something else? No, I think that's it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks.
Thanks very much for bringing up those two dates. Elaine?
Hi, everybody, Elaine Pagarelli.
Hi.
I made names since I was all down on that-
I was wondering who he was talking about. Sal should have gotten up and said, no, she's no longer-
Thanks, thanks so much. Yes, we all miss the bank, that's for sure. And let's see, but I know that you're all working hard to try to do what you can for the village, and thank you. And thank you for all the, the budget help, and Ryan had to leave, but amazing job and all the work. But I did want to make two comments. One on the marker, on the historic marker. There was a historic marker at the wardhouse. We have a picture of it. There was a state marker, but it was pre, I spoke to Pomeroy. It was pre-Pomeroy, and we would like to get, get that replaced. So there will be more markers in the village. I know Jenny worked on your projects for that, right? With your coursework on the markers. And the second thing was, I wanted to also comment on EVAC and all the wonderful work that they do for our community. We just had our CPR class, our second CPR class at the library that was sponsored by the Community Fund. We had two- Um, we had two classes, 11 people attended. They were so grateful. And the, the East Chester, the EMS, the, the presenters were fantastic and, and very thorough. Um, and personally, uh, twice in April, um, evac came to our home to transport my mom to, um, White Plains Hospital. And she is now in, in rehab, doing well. Um, but we, our family just appreciated the professionalism and the, uh, quick response of the Tuckahoe Police first and then, um, the, the EMS team, um, all the way to the hospital until everything was, you know, completed. And, um, it, it's, it's very reassuring, especially when you're doing this around midnight after working all day, um, to have that kind of, kind of help. Um, and I just so appreciate it. And please give to this, to this wonderful entity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you can go on to eastchesterems.com if you want to, if you're interested in learning what, you know, what the criteria is to volunteer. And also there is a big donate button there, um, that you can give. Somebody else? Really, Anthony?
Anthony Fiori again. I just heard this tonight on, on the news. June, they're saying about June 1st, this is about the budget. If the government should default then, how would it affect it locally? Just keep that in mind.
Mhm. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, everyone. Beverly Christian, 72 Main Street. Um, I think, I'm listening to the comments about why don't we have this or that in the, in the village? I think that things have changed now. We don't need the brick and mortar stores anymore. Um, I mean, I'm in my seventies, but I'm, I'm online shopping. I mean, it's so, I, I don't think that a lot of businesses want to even put that money in to do that because they're not going to have anybody come into the store. It's frustrating for people who, who are used to that and had that, but I think the times have changed and there's not going to be that priority. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to address the board? Or one person? Okay, do you have something that you want to add, trustee Taylor?
As far as the, you know, we thanked everybody, but we didn't, we left out John. We got to thank John. John was there throughout the whole process. He worked really hard. So we got to thank John also.
Thank you, John, for all your help. Um, you, you just asked John, could you find out what other communities are doing? And he just, five minutes later, here, this is what their six-page report. So thank you very much, um, for your help as well. And I know David appreciates it. So unless there's anyone else who would like to address the board, I will, we will adjourn the meeting and we will see you on June 5th. Tuckahoe, not May 8th, June 5th. Have a good night.